Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Special Education Subcommittee of the Quincy School Committee. And on the Subcommittee are myself as Chair, Mrs. Lebo, and Mrs. Hubley, and she is on her way. This Subcommittee is not a meeting of the whole school committee, so therefore, per open-meeting law, only Subcommittee members may discuss, deliberate, and vote on matters before the Subcommittee. Alright, so we have three items on our agenda tonight. The first one is a presentation on the Pivotal Response Training. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Graham, Ms. Shaughnessy, and Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Perdiós, for having us here this evening. Over the last couple of years, in multiple presentations that my team has had before you, we have mentioned Pivotal Response Treatment, or PRT. So at the request of the Committee tonight, I am honored to have Michelle Sullivan and Jamie Shaughnessy from the South Shore Autism Center to present to you on PRT in Quincy Public Schools.
Thank you so much for having us. I'm Michelle Sullivan. I'm the Executive Director at the South Shore Autism Center. I'm originally from California, and I was trained in Pivotal Response Treatment by my advisor in graduate school.
I'm Jamie Shaughnessy. I'm a Behavior Analyst at South Shore Autism Center. I'm actually homegrown in Quincy, went through Quincy Public Schools, so it adds this extra layer of excitement to be partnering with some awesome educators at RDLC. And I'm super excited to be here tonight, too, so thank you so much for having us.
And we wanted to start out just by sharing a little bit about how our partnership between South Shore Autism Center and Quincy Public Schools has grown over the years. And it really began about five years ago, really with supporting some individual QPS students with some one-on-one ABA support. And then that grew from there with some collaboration, really kind of looking at the initial vision for what has now become the De Cristofaro Learning Center, really with Dr. Cristofaro and Erin Perkins. We were really involved in that initial vision and kind of planning for what that center would look like. And then we went on to do some program evaluations of the CARES program at Delaquiesa, as well as in the pre-K program, as well as the elementary CARES programs at Snug Harbor and Squanton. And then now we have an ongoing relationship in the pre-K program at RDLC. And our BCBA, Jamie Shaughnessy, is doing some consultation there in both the integrated and the sub-separate classrooms in the pre-K program. We're providing direct service for students there in the pre-K program, and behavior assessment, as well as behavior support. We're leading ongoing paraprofessional trainings there for the, in the RDLC program, both last year and this year. And then we've also been involved in the Professional Day of Learning, last year and this year, as well.
So we'll get into what ABA, or Applied Behavior Analysis, is. It's an evidence-based scientific approach that uses the principles of learning to reliably influence socially significant behavior. It focuses on improving behaviors and skills such as communication, social skills, daily living skills, academics. And we also take a look at potential barriers to achieving those skills. Barriers can include challenging behaviors. In ABA, we aim to identify the reasons that these behaviors might occur so that we can replace those behaviors with more appropriate skills such as communication, social skills, daily living, and those accessing academics. So what many folks often think of when they see or hear ABA is a clip I'm going to show, and it's a clip of discreet trial training. So in this video, in this clip, too, just watch for the skill that's being taught and the reward that's selected, and I'll talk through it after.
So Reese, what do you want to work for? Play-Doh. Alright, we're going to work for Play-Doh. And we're going to work on letters J, F, C, and R. Reese, give me R. Good job, you gave me R. Give me C. Good job, you gave me C. Give me F. Uh-oh, give me F. Good job, high five.
There was a correction procedure without earning a token.
Give me F. Good job, you gave me F.
Now the child earns a token because he did it correctly.
Give me J. Good job, you gave me J.
So this child was working on letter identification. The reward was a sticker or a token on a sticker chart. And once he earns each token, he ultimately gets the selected reward, which I believe they said was Play-Doh. And that's contingent upon each correct response. So again, this is a type of ABA called discreet trial training, but what we do is a little bit different. Okay, so pivotal response treatment is a little bit different than what you just saw. It is the more naturalistic ABA intervention. So it is evidence-based, but it was, it really tries to focus on teaching foundational skills rather than like discreet skills, like where we're really trying to teach kids how to learn. And really, once a child has learned how to learn, then it's going to allow the child to really be able to learn all those different skills that we want kids to learn without having to teach each of them in isolation. And it was really developed initially back in the 1970s by Bob Kegel and Dr. Laura Schreidman as an alternative way to teach relative than, relative to those like more rigid approaches that you just saw. So that discreet trial is a little bit more highly structured, more rigid way of teaching that is very what you saw, adult-led, adult-driven. So by comparison, PRT is going to be more child-led. And look, a little bit different, as you'll see in a few minutes. So PRT emphasizes enhancing a child's motivation and engagement in learning, fostering a love for learning, and promoting generalization of learned skills. The key concepts, which we'll kind of see, too, in a few, are that the practice is child-directed or child-led. Teaching is embedded in meaningful everyday activities, so really, a learning opportunity can be accessed at any point during the school day. Instructions are varied across teachers, locations, and different materials throughout the whole learning process. Materials include toys and preferred activities. And rewards include learning by playing, engaging in highly preferred activities, and a whole lot of praise. So in other words, PRT is, has a heavy focus on making learning super, super fun.
Okay, and PRT is really trying to address what are sort of the core areas of difficulty or deficits that are sort of foundational to getting a diagnosis of autism. So if you're familiar with what leads to a diagnosis, it really focuses on social communication and restricted and repetitive behavior. So to get a diagnosis of autism, an individual has to show, has to meet diagnostic criteria in those two key areas. So PRT is going to try to address those social communication deficits, first by trying to improve or advance communication, areas of communication. And by addressing communication, that's going to help to not only improve communication, but also hopefully help reduce any challenging or disruptive behaviors. So hopefully, we can kind of get that increase in communication and a decrease in challenging behavior simultaneously. And by focusing on that social side of social communication can also help to foster the ability to develop social relationships with others in the environment and developing peer friendships. So sometimes that, like you saw in that clip with the discreet trial, there's often really a focus on adult-to-child interactions. And so as you'll see in PRT, we're going to show you some examples where there's peer-to-peer, like kind of in a group setting as well, so it can help us to foster friendships with peers as well. The other side, in addition to the social communication side of meeting criteria for autism, is that like restricted and repetitive interests is also key to getting that diagnosis of autism. So we're going to, in PRT, really try to broaden the interest, the repertoire, of what individuals with autism enjoy doing, what activities do they engage in. So rather than having that limited skill set, really trying to broaden the skill set of the children that we're working with here. So through making these improvements, ultimately, that's going to hopefully lead to a decrease in the reliance on adult supervision, which is going to help the children to be more independent, able to maybe manage their own behaviors over time, which will ultimately help them to be able to access more mainstream activities and lead them to be able to be more available to general education opportunities within the school setting. And then the, the key sort of word there in that pivotal response treatment is pivotal. What do we mean by pivotal? So we're going to focus on what we call pivotal behaviors, which means that they're foundational skills, and we kind of think of these as like the obstacles. What is holding kids with autism back? What makes autistic kids not learn in the same way that typical kids might learn? So we call these pivotal behaviors foundational skills. And so if we can support learning in these pivotal behaviors, then it's going to help students to be able to access their school curriculum and set them up for success. So what might these pivotal behaviors be? So one of them is motivation. What makes autistic kids maybe be less motivated to learn compared to other typically developing kids? So motivation is a key one. Another one is ability to be able to attend to multiple things at the same time, so that attention across multiple things in the environment. Third is initiation with others. So like you saw in that little clip of the boy with the letters, sometimes we see that kids who are learning in that kind of discreet trial way, that they'll kind of sit back and wait for an adult to prompt them. But we really want our kiddos to initiate with others and not just wait to be prompted. So that initiation is really key. And then the last one is the ability to manage their own behaviors. So ultimately, we want our kiddos to grow up to be independent and not to be so reliant on adults in their environment for prompting. And so we want them to be able to manage their own behaviors and be as independent as they can be. So these are the four what we'd call pivotal behaviors that PRT is trying to address that's ultimately going to lead them to be more self-sufficient and able to access, again, these like mainstream opportunities as much as the child has the potential to do.
So the skills that we can develop using PRT include increasing language, play skills, academics, coping skills, self-management, expanding interest in social skills, and that's not an exhaustive list, there's many more things that we can work on as well. So let's get into it, this is the fun part. So we implement PRT using these strategies, gaining the student's attention, giving clear and appropriate instruction, teaching different examples to broaden interest, balancing instruction between things students know and things that they're actively working on, and giving students choices and taking turns while we're teaching them. So we do a lot of modeling. Pre-K teachers and parents demonstrate these strategies across various parts of the school day. So we're going to focus right now on gaining the student's attention and giving clear and appropriate instruction to show you the clips. So in the following clip, you'll see how the teacher gains attention from each kiddo prior to her instruction. Once she has their attention, she presents a clear and concise instruction to return a greeting, so look for that. And then also to find their name on the board. She also differentiates instruction to each kiddo's level of ability. You'll see that, it's great.
Hi, Haja.
Hi Hannah.
Good girl, come find your name. Where's Haja? Good girl, Haja came to school today. Hi Leon, can you touch?
Hi Hannah.
Say hi Hannah.
Hi Hannah.
Can you touch?
Hi Hannah.
Good job, come find Leon. Find, where's Leon? Yeah, I'll hold this for you. Good job. Hi Cameron.
Hi Hannah.
Come on up and find your name. Yeah, I'm going to give you two choices. Find Cameron. Good job. Cameron came to school today.
So very cool. One way that she's able to gain attention is by making sure that she's at eye level with these kiddos. She's using a tablet which has a visual that enables the kiddos to return a greeting effectively. And she is looking for signs of eye contact or fleeting gaze so that she knows that the kiddos are attending to her. And then you can also see that awesome example of how she initiated, oh, we went, the instruction, sorry, she initiated, differentiating the instruction by making that, the names, the amount of names that were on the board for that newer learner, just a smaller array, so he was set up for success, really cool. And as you could see, he was really excited to do this, so she's effectively making learning super fun. That's the theme. Okay, in the next clip that you'll see is another strategy we use that includes teaching different examples to broaden attention. So in this clip, you'll see students learning about the letter Y. Watch for differences between this clip and then that first clip that we showed where the kiddo was identifying letters using flashcards.
It's my turn. Yeah, little Y, first little Y. First little Y. Big one. Ready? One, two, nice. Nice. Shannon, you said.
Oh, new friends.
Now, we're going to talk about our Y sounds. Do you remember all these funny pictures? What was this one? It wasn't a zebra, it was a special snow monster, it's a yeti. Yeti, can you say yeti? And then we have yoke. Yoke. Yardstick. Yam. What's this one, the head up and down? Head up and down is, yes.
Awesome. So in that clip, you can see that the letter Y was posted on the smartboard in the beginning of the video. Kiddos were taking turns making the letter Y using wooden blocks, so they're using their hands to be actively involved in participating in learning how to form this letter in a really unique way. Then they talk about words that start with the letter Y. And at the same time, the teacher's embedding different gestures, expressive language, and listening skills to keep the kids on their toes and keep it engaging and keep them actively participating as well. So another strategy, or a couple strategies here, is balancing instruction between things that students know and things that they're learning, and giving students choices and taking turns. So in the next clip, you'll see instruction embedded within a preferred game that these kiddos really enjoy. The students already know their colors, they know how to label different items, but they're working on some tougher skills that include taking turns, and also flexibility within a game. Notice the boy who doesn't get the card that he was hoping for in this clip.
Now listen, we are not peeking, we're not peeking. Reach your hand in, reach your hand in, no peeking. Let's see what color you got. What'd you get? Green, green what? A green dog? Go, no green star. Alright, you ready? Alright, ready? Let's put your card down. Now, no peeking. Now, pick one. No looking. Alright, what'd you get? What color is it? Is it red? Is it red? Well, you'll find the bunny, don't worry, but first we found, what color? Very nice, and it's a blue watering can. We use that for flowers. Hey, my turn, my turn, look, I'm going to close my eyes. What'd I get? I got purple flowers, try to smell them. You don't like them?
I love this clip so much. So even though this buddy didn't get the card he wanted, he was requesting the bunny. And this teacher knows that this kiddo really enjoys that card and this specific stimuli at this time. But she, so he didn't get what he had hoped for, but she still keeps the learning happening, keeps it motivating and keeps it fun. And that's a huge key concept with PRT. So once we've started working on establishing skills, we have to reward them in order for them to stick. So by keeping learning fun and motivating, we're able to reward kiddos when they gain new skills. We reward skills, reward, the reward itself is related to the skill that the kiddo is learning. The reward is immediately delivered when the skill is demonstrated. And we also reward attempts. So we reward the kids when we see that they're really trying to achieve a certain skill or demonstrate a certain skill. So remember the kiddo that didn't get the card he wanted on his first turn. He remained calm, he remained cool, and he continued to participate. So he demonstrated flexibility and gameplay, which is that skill that the teacher was looking for. So in the next clip, notice her hand and how she strategically supports him to access the reward.
Alright. Are we ready? Ready, put your hand in. Look at those eyes. Look at those eyes. What'd you get? A bunny, what color is it? And that one's kind of a tricky color. Like, do you think it's more orange or more brown? You think more orange, I think it might be more, it's not red, you coconut.
Yeah, so a skill like, you know, tolerating not getting what you want, especially for a five-year-old, is a really hard thing to do. But even while he's learning this skill, he's super happy, he's super engaged, and he's having loads of fun with his teacher as he's participating actively in learning. Super cool, we love what we do. There we go. Okay. So we also, when we're rewarding skills that we see as they occur, we do our best to do so as quickly as possible. And even when the skill is not demonstrated perfectly, so you could kind of see in a previous clip, too, when the teacher asked, "What is this?" And he, the child said "star," but you couldn't really understand that it was star, but she still gave him praise for that. So he's really trying and he's attempting to omit that word. So we see a lot of that, especially in preschool, but we do want to immediately acknowledge and honor these sounds or approximations to words as if they are the word or request. This is how we shape language, this is how we continue to make the use of language and using our words super fun and engaging and motivating. So those are additional strategies on how we reward those behaviors or skills and making them stick. Alright. So in the next clip, you'll see some lovely examples of all of these things that we just talked about, setting the stage for Pivotal Response Treatment, as well as rewarding a lot of these behaviors while keeping things super engaging and super fun.
Good, and then we need our big Y. Alright, now, now if you use this, you can trace it. Your turn. Are you not going to give me a five? Now, do you want to make a T?
Shadow.
That looks really good. Oh, Shadow likes it. Can you clear that one, and then you can make another letter if you want, and I'll help Joey. Ready? So first, we need to make our Y, we need little Y and a big Y. So first, little Y, remember right here. Little Y, then? Big Y, good, then can you trace? Let's start with the little Y, remember, little Y, then big Y. Little Y. Now, what letter do you want to make? A C, oh, that looks like a lowercase c. And what did you make? It's like a D. That was good. There you go, very nice. Alright, why don't we make one more letter, and then we're going to do our coloring.
He totally loved the camera, loved it, it was great. So yeah, awesome clip and awesome examples there. The teacher embedded shared control or, you know, the activity being child-led, giving the child choices on what letter they wanted to do. They had the theme started out with, as they were learning about the letter Y, they continued to make different Y in different ways. So teaching those multiple cues or multiple examples, provided immediate praise, high fives, and again, being super engaging, keeping it fun, keeping it motivating. Yeah, so if anybody has questions about this, or, you know, we have a little link here if you're interested in learning more about PRT, you can contact us. But we're so open to any questions, too.
Awesome, thank you guys very much for that presentation. Any questions from either of my colleagues?
No questions, I have a phone.
Oh, okay, alright, hold on one second. Turn your mic on, there we go.
So it was great to see how much fun they were having and how much they enjoyed it. It was amazing, and I think to see how much you enjoy it is pretty fun, too. But it really is, what a stark difference from the regular ABA to this. I was never a huge fan of ABA, but this is amazing, this really is amazing. Very intense, number-wise. I mean, you can't do it with a crowd of kids. Has to be a pretty small group, I imagine, to get this done well.
This type of ABA?
So we're actually showing you examples where we're using it in a group setting, whereas traditional discreet trial is usually one-to-one exclusively. So we actually intentionally showed you some examples where we are doing it in a group. So you can do PRT, and there's actually a whole book on using PRT in classrooms, which we've actually modeled our training on, is Classroom PRT.
It was, it was wonderful to see, it really was wonderful to see, and I'm so happy. I really like it way better than ABA, and I wouldn't know why. So I'm really glad you gave us this, thank you.
And we're hoping to sort of help you to understand that this is ABA. It's just a different, it's a different type of ABA than what people typically think of when they think of ABA.
Seems much more rigid to me.
Right, and this is naturalistic and embedded into the classroom in a way that we hope feels more, feels, well, naturalistic and really just part of the everyday activities. You can do it all day long, you don't have to pull children out of the classroom to do discreet trial. It can just be through, across the day.
And his, excuse me, his love of the camera was pretty cool.
Because they're having fun.
They were having fun.
And the teachers, too.
So am I.
The teachers are, too.
Yeah, having a blast all the time.
So good to hear. That's who's with kids. So good to hear.
They're learning.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. This is wonderful. Echo Mrs. Lebov, this is just... This is great. And I love the videos with the children. That's why we're here. I mean, that is... That's amazing, and they're so sweet. And your energy is just so engaging. I'm watching you and I'm smiling because I'm like watching you talk and it's like making me smile because you're so engaged. It's wonderful to see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, exactly the same thing. Just definitely your passion for this and just how much you love it, and you can tell how happy you are that the kids are learning in this way. It definitely comes through, so thank you. And just your work, both of you on... Just for autistic kids, not only in Quincy but on the South Shore in general. Just, I feel like it's always so important, but I feel like just especially in this culture right now where we're... I feel like different things are coming out that are really hurtful and hard for autistic families of autistic children to hear. And just to know that you're there supporting and continuing to do that hard work for our kids and just knowing that, you know, it's absolutely worth the investment that we're putting in, and they're just getting much more self-sufficient in those life skills that are gonna help them succeed. So I appreciate all your work and all your time, too.
Thank you.
So thank you for being here tonight. All right. So, and item number one for our agenda tonight. And so item number two on our agenda is an out-of-district update. And I believe we have Ms. Graham and Ms. Leary for that.
So, thank you again for having me. It's kind of hard to follow that, but definitely not nearly as cute as those little pumpkins. And I just, again, I reiterate, the relationship we have with South Shore Autism has really grown and developed, and they truly are partners with us. And we value the work that they do every single day in supporting our students. And as you can see, the way Jamie was tonight is the way she is every day when we see her. So it's pretty fantastic. But switching gears a little bit, so Jen and I are here tonight to talk to you a little bit about where we are at with our out-of-district students to kind of give you an update. You know, we've had multiple conversations over the last couple of years about the opening of the DeChristopher Learning Center and how would it impact the numbers of students that we have out of district and how that would look long-term. So we just wanted to take a few minutes to give you some updates and then certainly answer any questions that you may have.
All right, so we're gonna start with, what is an out-of-district placement? And explain what that means. So an out-of-district placement is a special education placement where students educated and receive services at a school or program that's not located within the student's homeschool district. So not a school that is in Quincy or a part of the Quincy Public Schools. The Individualized Education Program Team, which includes parents, educators, specialists, determines if a student needs an out-of-district placement based on the student's individual needs and the services they require. These placements have special education students only. There are no typical peers in these programs. So they're very restrictive environments for these students to attend with extremely specialized special education services. Prior to recommending an out-of-district placement, we try to exhaust all available in-district supports before we send a student on a longer bus ride to go to another town to a school that does not have any typically developing peers in it as well. When we're making these decisions, which can be hard ones, to send students to a more intensive program, we try to look as close as possible to home to help cut down on the time that the students are on transportation. And we require consent from parents in order to change student placements. So either to begin attending an out-of-district school or return from an out-of-district school, we need parental consent to do that. When the student is placed in an out-of-district school, the district, so we and Quincy Public Schools, are responsible for ensuring that the student's IEPs are appropriately implemented by the school program that they are attending. This is a list of all of the out-of-district schools where we currently have students attending. There are more in Massachusetts than this. And the number that you see next to each is the number of students that we currently have enrolled in those schools as of March 1st this year. All of these different schools, there's a long list here, they have different areas of focus that they specialize in. So, for example, schools such as Hagashi or the May Center, the New England Center for Children, Melmark, all focus on students with autism. The Beverly School for the Deaf and the Learning Center for the Deaf focus on students with hearing impairments. Schools like the Kennedy Day School focus on students with significant medical needs, and it's affiliated with Franciscan Children's Hospital. So when we're looking for out-of-district placements for students, it really depends what needs they have, which school we're gonna look at. As you can see here, Social Educational Collaborative is by far our largest population of students from the Quincy Public Schools. We have 61 students enrolled there. A collaborative program is a public school program where public school districts join together to develop programming to help support students with more intensive needs. So we are a member district of the Social Educational Collaborative along with other towns on the South Shore that work together to build this community program to help students who live in our area. We have so many students there because they have several different programs that address different needs. So the Community School supports students with significant medical needs. The Mini School supports students with autism. The Quest Program supports students with social-emotional needs. And these programs, depending on how each one works, can run from age three all the way up to age 22. Yeah, so that's kind of a summary of our... The programs our students are at right now.
So the numbers that you see on the slide are the numbers that we pulled from the Aspen Sims Report as of March 1st every year, starting in 2020, all the way up to what we are projecting for 2026. For 2026, we are projecting a number of 143, which is pretty darn fantastic. This is based on our current students, with three additional students that Quincy will become fiscally responsible for as of July 1st. And what that means is those students have already moved into Quincy prior to April 1st, and then Quincy does become fiscally responsible for them as of July 1. The students moved into Quincy already with an accepted placement at an out-of-district school, so we cannot change that. It's important to note that between 2023 and 2025, we had 10 students move into Quincy Public Schools that already had out-of-district placements as their accepted placement on their IEPs. Two of those students were students that were previously at residential schools, one of which is the Boston Hagashi School that does have an annual tuition of $297,540. And the other was at the Evergreen Center, which has an annual tuition of $335,986. So when we're talking about our out-of-district costs, it's really important to note that there are many opportunities that we don't have any control over. You know, that's over $500,000 of students that moved into Quincy with that tuition bill previously attached to them. And then what I want to also point out here are what are numbers at the RDLC and how that has impacted our out-of-district numbers for the district. So as you can see, for school year 2024-25, we currently have 48 students at RDLC in grades K through 8. We are projecting for next school year, '25-'26, that we'll have 54 students. Some of those are... The difference is that there are obviously a handful of students that RDLC is the proposed placement for students that are currently in either our pre-K cares or our elementary cares, that the teams have determined that those students do need a higher level of need, a higher lender of support, excuse me, and that they will be transferring to RDLC for September of '25. I also wanted to give you some examples of some of what the tuition rates would be for students that had similar profiles, a similar level of needs. So for example, as Jen mentioned earlier, the Social Educational Collaborative Mini School, they have an annual tuition of $83,699. In addition to that, there's an average cost per year of about $40,000 for transportation. So for one student to attend the South Shore Educational Mini School would be a tuition of $123,699. For students that would potentially attend the May Center, their tuition is $153,256,000... I'm sorry, $254,000, again, with about $40,000 in transportation, for a total cost of $193,254. Or students that could attend the Melmark School, which is another one of our programs that supports children with autism, they have an annual tuition of $150,257, again, about $40,000 in transportation, for a total cost per student for $190,257. And then when we look at those numbers for 2025-2026, of those 54 students, about 30-ish are students that are in kindergarten through grade 3. So if we were to think about those 30-ish students potentially needing to attend an out-of-district placement, we're saving the district, because they're here in Quincy, in our own backyard, $5.2 million per year for just those 30 students alone. And so, you know, when we originally talked about the RDLC, it was about how many students can we bring back? And, you know, those original cohort of kids that we talked about, they're now six years older, and they aren't necessarily an appropriate fit for the school anymore because of their age. Most of them are middle-school and high-school-age students, and it wouldn't be appropriate for them to come back. So we really switched our thinking to what can we do now in order to keep as many children in district as possible? And we really feel that those 54 students represent that. So thinking about $5.2 million, and most of those children would be, if they were out of district, anywhere between an additional 12 to 17 years at that cost, with the, you know, projected increases in tuition, as we know, are going up every single year. And so we really want to make sure that we emphasize for you, but also for the folks at home, that although the RDLC came with a pretty hefty price tag, the benefits far outweigh that price tag. And, you know, first and foremost, we have 54 students that are here in Quincy that potentially wouldn't have been. And that's a pretty awesome thing to be able to say. And at that, we'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. Thank you for that presentation. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Lebov.
Thank you. This is very informative. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of questions. How many of the kids are residential? The out-of-district kids?
Oh, that's a great question, Mrs. Lebov. It's not as many... Well, to be honest with you, that number that we showed you previously, that big jump from '25 to '26, there are a number of students that are aging out. So there are a pretty good handful of students residentially that are turning 22 or have turned 22 that are no longer part of that number. I would say... I apologize, we should have pulled that number for you previously. I would say at the May Center, I think we have two or three students. At Boston Hagashi, at one point, we had five students there residentially. I think we're down to three there. At the Evergreen Center, we have one. At the Perkins School, we have one. So I would say, you know, maybe half dozen or so, but we can certainly get an exact number for you.
And for the kids that are not residential, what's the farther some of them have to travel to get to these locations?
You know, as we know, living in Quincy and living on the South Shore, it's not always about the distance, it's about the time. And so I would, you know, we really and truly try to keep it at about an hour. Unfortunately, there are some students that, you know, an hour and 15, an hour and 20, depending on traffic. You know, but then we have students like... Furthest distance is... Really, the Melmark School in Beverly is pretty far, but it's really a straight shot. And so getting there, once you get through Boston, is fairly easy. But we definitely try and keep, you know, within that hour distance.
I mean, I think we're lucky in this state that we have so many options for kids that need special programs.
We are incredibly lucky, and we have some really fantastic schools that we work with.
Yeah, we do. And I'm wondering, at some point in time, we're gonna have to think about middle school and high school.
We are.
For this population. I mean, I think really this is... Just the fact that if we... And we're not giving them a lesser education.
Absolutely not.
We're giving them a significantly better experience without the traveling and staying in their own community.
I would agree 100%. And the fact that we have... They're here with us in Quincy, and their families are part of that school all day, every day. And really also that, you know, the events that we have... You know, there's a couple of springtime events coming up. There's an art show, there's a field day. They're right here in Quincy, so families can drop by, they can see their students, they can then head home or back to work. And also that we have the utmost of say, oversight over their day-to-day programming. And although our other schools are incredible partners with us and we are able to observe and have our say, it's really different when we have boots on the ground and have our say, it's really different when we have boots on the ground and we can really look at the day-to-day operations and, and the programming that we're offering our kids and making adjustments immediately.
I think feeling much more comfortable, because you can see it, so you just, I mean, I know those are great schools, but you send in a kid there and you don't really know who's there that day, and we have that control here and there.
We do.
So it's wonderful, it really is wonderful. It's a fantastic program. Like I said, we're gonna have to expand it up. I don't know what the other population will wanna go for next, Ms. Perkins. This is really amazing, it really is amazing, so.
Thank you.
And I think we'll hear that we start, have to start doing something for the twenty-three year olds. Something, somebody's gotta do it. Every town, every town is facing these, these prices. Everybody's budget is already impacted by them, and you can hear it. Every time you read the newspaper, you can see it, that the out-of-district tuitions and transportation costs are, are killing the students. We're certainly not gonna get any relief from the federal government.
Right.
Now, I don't know if the state can help more. I know they try, they do try. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I think we had about ten students last year who were residential, but that was just a quick breeze through the list while you were talking.
That, that's a significant difference in tuition, right?
Yes, very much so.
Give me a, one place, what tuition might be in residential.
Okay.
May Center is probably.
Yeah, the May Center is a good.
Next.
Yeah.
We appointed next.
Yep.
We appointed kind of.
Thank you. This is the state list of all the tuitions, so it's long. So the May Center for the day program, this current year, is a hundred and fifty-three thousand, fifty-four dollars, and for the residential program is three hundred and eighteen, two fifty-four. So it's, it is a pretty significant difference. Katie just mentioned the New England Center for Children. The day program there is a hundred and fifty-six thousand, and they have three different levels of residential that range from three hundred and twelve to four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So it is a pretty significant difference for day versus residential.
Awesome.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you both for this. I'm really glad to, to see this data, and thank you for putting it all together.
You're welcome.
Couple of questions for you. How many of that, so of the fifty-four, you said a significant number would be out of district? If you had to guess sort of, how many do you think we could have kept here versus how many we, we would have sent out? Do you think it's, do you think it's the whole fifty-four we would have had to send out, or do?
I, I wouldn't confidently say it's the whole fifty-four. I would comfortably say it would be at least half, if not three-quarters.
Yeah, so that thirty that you mentioned is probably kind of conservative, on the conservative number, that's great. Definitely, that's, that's what I think people sort of need to know, the savings that, even though we're not pulling people back, we never really intended to pull them out of a situation that was really working for them. It was more just an opportunity to come back if families wanted to. But I think not only the cost savings, but keeping those fifty-four or thirty to fifty-four kids in Quincy, like you mentioned, with the opportunities we have here, and just feeling more a part of QPS, and, and just, you know, less time sitting on a bus for those kiddos, and their families being able to participate more during the day if they have to work. So that's, that's, I think is fantastic. And do you plan, so, so fifty-four K to eight, are, is the plan to follow them, is the plan to grow it as they go, sort of to Mrs. Lebo's point, is the plan to follow them through the high school years, or what, what would that plan be?
So when we submitted the application last year through the Department of Ed, we started to kind of already scaffold what that could potentially look like. So right now, we don't have any eighth graders, so it's, it's kind of a non-issue for next year. But in thinking, oh, excuse me, in thinking forward, we do have a handful of seventh graders that ultimately we would like to keep them and, and grow the program as they grow. And so because we already have the approval, the adding additional classes for high schools is a fairly easy process. And the woman that we use at the Department of Ed has, has already given us the documentation that just, one step at a time.
Okay, that sounds great. And obviously, you'd be looking for opportunities to bring those kiddos into the, you know, the high schools or something, if, if they could handle that, but this would just be if, if they couldn't.
Yep.
Right, okay. That's fantastic. Thank you guys for putting this together.
You're welcome.
For the update. Excellent. All right, anything else on those? Oh, okay.
I'm not, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And just moving on to our last item on the Special Education Subcommittee agenda, I'm super excited to have Sarah Wood come on up from, to give an update on the Quincy Special Education Parent Advisory Council, the CPAC. It's a group of parents that put their volunteer hours and, with, with their own time constraints, with their own kiddos, to, to help Ms. Graham and her team do the best we can for these kids, so happy to hear your update. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you for having us. Sorry, this is gonna be a quick one. We don't have, we're at the end of the year, we're building onto our programs to end our school year. We have, sorry, I feel like that just got really loud. We've had a great year. We've had a number of parents start to join, a good amount of parents start to join us, especially from the younger grades. A lot of preschool through third grade, we've seen a lot, a big uptick of parents. And we've also started to see some of the older parents, older kid, not older parents, parents of older students start to participate a little more. I'm working on that one. But it's been a good year, and I have to say, the first thing I wanna say is, we really need to thank Mayor Koch, who has supported us a lot the past two years, and he has been providing us with funding to do some of these programs that we are working really hard to start to initiate within the city, and really start to promote more things for our students to participate in. More chances for inclusion, more chances for participation, and more chances just to have their own individual programs to do at, within their city. So we really appreciate that support. And so the one thing I, Julie, I've worked with Julie, I've worked with Ms. Lebo and Ms. Hubley, and we have a lovely mom who came to us and asked for support in getting a program called I Can Bike, and it's a great program. I know tons of parents who are, love it, if they say their child learns to ride a bike within a week. And to me, that's amazing. It's for all special needs students. It starts at the age of eight, and it goes to a hundred, where anybody can participate, as long as you have to be eight years old to start, sorry, preschool and kindergarten parents, but, and we are going to be bringing that this summer. We got funding through Mayor Koch again, which we really truly appreciate his support. And this program is going to run the week of August eighteenth, and we'll be sending out information in the next, hopefully, three weeks or so, but it will be at the end of the summer. And the one thing I wanna say is, anybody who thinks that their child could use this, I'm telling you, it's a worthwhile thing. Riding a bike is one of those basic fundamentals of childhood, of adulthood, of teenager, teenage dumb, middle schooled dumb. My son is an avid bike rider right now, and I think it's such a great skill for these kids to be able to get out with their families, to be able to get out with, you know, and friends, and just go and ride your bike, and just have a little bit of freedom and a little bit of time, just, and it's an, it's an activity that's physical, which a lot of these kids don't always get this physical activity, so it's a great thing to have. So we will be sending out information coming up. The one thing I will say, any teachers out there, if you know kids who you think might benefit from this, sometimes parents are a little hesitant, because you may have a kid who has, struggles with different things. My son is one of them. He struggles with physical activity. One, he doesn't like it, and two, he, motor skills are not the best. So we hesitate to do stuff like this, but I feel like this is a great opportunity for him to really get some one-on-one, and hopefully learn some really great skills. So any teachers out there, if you think this might benefit your students, start talking to parents, giving them information. It's a limited number, I think we, it's forty? Forty students can participate, so it is gonna be a first-come, first-served. And it's also going to be, you have to commit to the full week. If you want to participate in this program, you have to be able to say that you can be there Monday through Friday. It's a seventy-five minute ti- time limit per group, so we would need those kids to participate for seventy-five minutes every day for five days. That's the way the program works. So truly, we would love for people to participate, but please be aware of these constraints, because we want everyone to have the chance. So if this is successful, we hope to bring it back, maybe in a couple of years, like try and do something every couple of years, you know, we'll see what we can do. But, so this is the big program we've been kind of working on through the winter. The other thing we have coming up, we have a great presentation in May, I'm just gonna mention it real quick, with a special education lawyer who goes through the A through Zs of special education law for anybody who has issues that may need some support, or just wants to know the information, because sometimes you don't realize the things that you need support on, especially as the kids get older. Things like guardianship, things like social security, all of those things that become important as your child gets older. I, I would say for myself, I've had to contact someone just because we were denied social security for my son, which I still am boggled by, but we're trying to work on how that, we can appeal that. But these are the kind of things that, as a parent, you're just kind of like slogging through over and over, and how is this supposed to work? But, so he will be there to discuss some of these issues on May twenty-seventh. That'll be going out on our website and through all of our social media. And then finally, lastly, June seventh, we are having our end-of-the-year celebration, where we invite all of our special needs kiddos to come out. It will be in the parking lot behind the Learning Center. We have bouncy houses, we have face painting, we have all kinds of fun stuff. The kids had a great time last year, it was a huge event, and we had a great time, so that will be coming up too. But we've had a really good year, a successful year. There are things we wanna work on, and things we have coming up through the pipes that we wanna see happen, but so far, we feel pretty good about how the year has gone. And parents, I will say for the Learning Center, we have heard nothing but good things. So I have heard no issue, everybody loves the program, that are in the program, so it's definitely a success.
Yeah, thank you so much. I am so excited about the I Can Bike program. I know that Mrs. Hubley and I reached out to the, to the company when we heard about it, because we heard about it because it was in Hingham, I think, a couple of years ago.
Yeah, it was in Hingham, and Beth, just, Phian, sorry, I always blink on her last name, Beth Phian came to us about, and asked about it, her son Sammy, she wanted to get him involved in it. So that's where it started from, and that's kind of what pushed this through.
It's so, it's so exciting, and Kathy and I, and Mrs. Hubley and I actually went to the mayor and said, we can't ask the district to pay for this, I mean, we can't spring this on them. And he said, I'll cover it. I mean, he is really amazing. He really is amazing about things like that. With no fanfare or anything, you know, he just said, I'll cover it.
Yeah, no, and I think it's, it's amazing.
We had, Mrs. Hubley and I had planned to have a fundraiser. We were gonna have a fundraiser like at CAGNY, because who wouldn't, who wouldn't contribute to that, you know? Would've had fun? And he just said, no, I'll cover it, don't worry about it. So, and it has like a ninety percent success rate, which is amazing.
Yeah, it's, it's really amazing.
What I really like about it is, it's age-appropriate, so the kids will be grouped with people who are sort of their age. Am I right about that?
That's the hope.
They try to.
They try to do it as much as possible. I think sometimes the older the student is, or the older the adult is, they might get grouped with the younger kid. It just depends on how it works out, but I think a lot of times, it's, it is age-appropriate.
And I, I think it's really important to mention that we need volunteers, because every single student who's learning to ride a bike has two people with them.
Yes.
And you can't do it all day, because you're running.
You are walking fast, running.
Running behind a bike or next to a bike.
Yes.
So I think cer- certainly we can reach out to our students to do it. I know the summer, the sports teams would be right on it for forty-five minutes.
Yeah, and the high schools are. We've already, I've already spoken with North and a couple, so I think we'll definitely have some volunteers.
It's gonna be, we're gonna need, we're gonna need college kids too, I think.
Yeah. Sadly, most of them, that's actually, my daughter is gonna be a freshman, and we are, she moves in that weekend before the bike program, so she won't be here. She's my photographer, she's the one I would have taking pictures, but we will be moving her into college that weekend before, so. A lot of them will be leaving, so we won't have the college kids. But the high schoolers need the hours, so it's definitely worthwhile.
And the teams too, the teams love to do stuff like that, even the teams that are in season, you know, they can take forty-five minutes out of the day, whatever it is.
Well, and it's, they're running around, they're getting their exercise.
It's training, it's conditioning.
Yes.
I know I couldn't do it for forty-five minutes, but I, I plan to volunteer and do anything else they need. I'm sure there's some, I can take attendance or something.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna run with a bike.
You take pictures for us. Like I said, I'm losing my photographer, so.
I can do that too, but I, I am so excited about this, and especially, I think there's a new gentleman that's working part-time at the city and part-time at the park department?
Yes, Matt Lowe.
Matt Lowe.
Matt Lowe, yeah, and I met with him too, and he's looking for things to do in, in the city, and I mentioned to him about older kids, and I said, you really, you need to get things that, you can have them for the younger kids too, but if we're gonna have something, you can't be putting eight-year-old kids and eighteen-year-old kids in the same event.
Yeah.
And he understood that, so hopefully he'll become.
It's one of those things where I think for a long time, it was kind of just not thought about, because you just thought you're giving them an opportunity, so it doesn't really, but now, as, as we start looking at inclusion and how we're giving them this idea of being able to be themselves and be around other people.
And it's disrespectful.
My son is gonna be twenty years old next week. He is a tall kid, he's a big kid, and if he walks into a room and there's a five-year-old there, that five-year-old is of no interest to him, and probably will annoy him more than it will help him. So he needs to be with his peers, and I think, you know, I love, I love, I love everything that we have. I love buddy ball, I love top soccer, I love everything, but I think there's always room for improvement, and things like that could use the improvement of just maybe giving them a little gap with the ages. It just, it's, I think it's respectful.
I do too. I think it's very respectful, I think it's important. So I'm, I'm thrilled about that, and it's great to have Matt Lowe on board. I think he's gonna do some great things with us, for all of our kids in our community, so thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yeah, I was basically gonna say everything that Mrs. Lebo just said. I'm so excited about the program, I think it's gonna be fabulous. I'm so glad that we were able to get it off the ground, and that it's gonna take off, and I know it's gonna be amazing.
Yeah.
And I was gonna, also gonna elaborate on how we are gonna need a lot of volunteers, so.
Yeah, definitely.
That is like gonna be a huge thing, so hopefully the sports teams do come forward, because that's gonna be a, it's gonna be a right there, we really need the volunteers.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and just to add to my, my thank you for all the work, again, your group does as parent volunteers, sort of helping us, the amazing job that Ms. Graham does already, but just adding on to that, some supplemental support and ideas for that is fantastic. And also, you guys have your support group too, so just families are able to even use you as not only a resource, but also having that support, time for support and just social time.
I will say, that has become a very big, very popular thing in the past, actually since the beginning of school year. Our caregiver support group, we actually had one at the beginning of April, and we actually did a hybrid, where it was in-person, but also we gave the option to virtually come into it. And we did it at the Learning Center, so we had the big screen, so if you were up on the screen, you could see everything that was happening. And we had babysitters, so we had kids in the other room who were playing with my daughter and, and another mom, and it was a great, we had a good amount of people show up, and they were looking, they want the support, they need the support, they wanna be able to ask questions or just talk, so we're gonna be looking to extend that and maybe create more opportunities for that, so that's definitely in our wheelhouse right now.
Yeah, so we so appreciate that. And did you wanna mention the CPAC website, or any way that families could get all of this stuff?
Yes, you can go on our Facebook page, our website, which of course I don't have in front of me right now, but I know it's like, it's quincycpac.com, but you can look us up on Facebook, and we also have an email, so if you send us an email, we will add you to our email list, and we send out information all the time. We are constantly sending out emails, letting people know about things coming up, events or other ideas of things that we were gonna be doing, so. And just, I'm just gonna say, we have two of our board members who are leaving us at the end of this year, and so we are, we are looking for two new board members. But Emily and Darlene have been part of our group for the past couple of years, and have been really significant in us building up this board, so we are losing them this year, and it's, we're very sad, and we're gonna miss them, and we appreciate them so much, so we wanna just thank them for everything they have done the past couple of years to support the movement of CPAC, and seeing it go, get bigger and better, so.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for mentioning them and for all their work, and I'm sure they'll stay involved anyway.
Oh, yeah.
So, but thank you very much to you and your group, and Ms. Graham. And I think with that, we're adjourned the Subcommittee, the Special Ed Subcommittee tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, I'd like to call the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee meeting of April thirtieth to order, and I will turn it right over to Mrs. Vaughn. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, everyone, thank you for having us. I'm Bridgette Vaughn, Coordinator of Literacy in ELA K to eight, and I'm joined by, by Ms. Abby Nazaro, one of our wonderful, wonderful eighth-grade ELA teachers at Central Middle School. I also wanna mention that in addition to Ms. Nazaro, there are several other educators and students that have contributed to the content of these slides. You'll hear from Spencer Matthews and Victoria Cronin, two of our middle school reading teachers, as well as students from Broad Meadows Middle School, and you'll see examples and photos from many literacy events throughout the district, some of which include you, so thank you for participating and supporting our literacy efforts. Tonight's presentation is about why the texts we choose for students to read are so important. We'll aim to show you how texts shape students' experiences, growth, and understanding of the world. Literature, as we all know, is a powerful tool. It builds empathy, fosters self-awareness, and helps students connect to a wide variety of experiences. At Quincy Public Schools, we work intentionally to offer students a wide variety of texts throughout their education. In the core curriculum, students encounter texts that are part of structured lessons and thematic units. For novels, we have a thoughtful approval process that ensures selections are academically rigorous and culturally inclusive. Texts also serve as both mirrors and windows, mirrors to reflect students' own experiences, and windows to introduce them to new perspectives and cultures. Additionally, classroom libraries allow for independent book choice, giving students autonomy and encouraging a love for reading. It's essential that students have access to both assigned and self-selected texts, because it fosters independence, curiosity, and a sense of ownership over their learning. The goal is to provide many various pathways to literacy, ensuring that every student finds a book that resonates with them, challenges them, and helps them grow. So how do we choose the texts that we use? Choosing what students read is a deliberate and thoughtful process. We closely follow the Massachusetts Department of Education, of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI, ELA frameworks, which guide the skills, standards, and expectations at each grade level. Implementing the Massachusetts text selection process ensures that we apply best practices when adopting new materials. We use this process over the past several years to choose, roll out, and implement the new core curricula in grades K to five. In the Implement MA graphic at the bottom of the slide, you can see the four different phases of choosing high-quality instructional materials in the colored circles. Learn and prepare, investigate and select, launch, and implement and monitor. Each phase allows for feedback from all stakeholders, ensuring that we have all the information we need and are confident in our curriculum selection. We also seek out grant opportunities, such as GLEAM, which stands for Growing Literacy Equity Across Massachusetts. Grants like GLEAM provide crucial funding for bringing in new texts and high-quality instructional materials that might otherwise be out of reach. So by using our frameworks in ELA, our state implementation guidance process, and literacy grant opportunities, we can ensure that we're offering students high-quality we can ensure that we're offering students high-quality, inclusive and challenging texts that are aligned with state standards while honoring the various backgrounds and identities represented in our classrooms. In addition to frameworks and grants, we have several evaluation tools that help ensure quality and cultural responsiveness. CURATE, which stands for Curriculum Ratings by Teachers, involves real educators reviewing instructional materials for rigor and inclusiveness. We also consult Ed Reports, an independent nonprofit that evaluates curriculum programs based on alignment and usability. Tools like the NYU Culturally Responsive Scorecard help us assess whether texts accurately and respectfully represent different cultures and communities. The Reading League's Curriculum Evaluation Tool ensures that literacy instruction builds foundational reading skills and while Common Sense Media provides insight into age appropriateness and potential sensitivities. So by cross-referencing multiple sources, we ensure that texts we select are not only educationally strong, but also affirming, diverse and developmentally appropriate. So in grades K through five, students engage, engage with a rich and varied selection of texts. We use decodable readers to build early reading skills through systematic phonics instruction. Informational texts introduce students to the world of nonfiction, helping them learn how to read for knowledge and inquiry. Fiction trade books, high-quality, age-appropriate stories spark imagination and emotional connection. We also introduce students to novels, poetry and plays, exposing them to different genres and styles of writing early on. Incorporating this variety is critical because it teaches students to navigate different text types and genres while also developing comprehension strategies, critical thinking and a love for literature. Through all these formats, we prioritize diverse voices and experiences, helping even our youngest learners to begin to see the value of multiple perspectives. When it comes to novels selected for whole-class instruction, we have a robust novel approval process. Teachers proposing a novel must provide detailed rationales explaining how the book meets curricular goals, developmental appropriateness and cultural responsiveness standards. This process ensures that novels reflect the values of our community and our students. It's not just about literary, literary quality. It's about ensuring positive, meaningful and inclusive representation. Curriculum adoption on a broader scale for anthologies, core programs and supplemental materials involved, involves multiple layers of review, including feedback from educators, administrators and students. Also, for a little over twenty years now, in addition to my work here in Quincy, I've been teaching writing and children's literature courses as an adjunct professor. This helps me to articulate the why behind effective literacy practices. It enables me to more confidently coach K-8 teachers, support curriculum decisions and advocate for high-quality, culturally responsive literature in classrooms. In addition, in January of each year, I'm able to join the ALSC, the Association for Library Service to Children. They have open meetings where they review and identify the best of the best in children's books, recordings and other digital media for ages fourteen and younger. So ultimately, our goal is to build a collection that's rich, inclusive and powerful, a collection that reflects our commitment to educational excellence and equity for all students. And so now I'd like to share a video with you where Mr. Spencer Matthews, one of our six, grade six reading educators, shares, excuse me, how this process works.
Hi, my name is Spencer Matthews. I'm a grade six reading skills teacher at Central Middle School. Tonight I'll be going over the Quincy Public Schools book approval process. In order to do that, I put together a quick presentation, so I'm just going to share my screen with you. So the goal of this presentation is to explain the process itself. I'll highlight the two books that I recently had approved and I'll also explain why it's so important for teachers to be able to do this. So the first thing that a teacher does when they find a book that they think that students will really enjoy is they go and double-check the list to see if it's on there. This list can be found in our Google Drive system. You can see the books approved for elementary, middle and high school levels. I checked it, I didn't see the two books I wanted to get approved, so that's why I went through the process. Eventually, they got added to the list for grade six. Those are those two books highlighted there with the stars next to them. By the way, those two books were booked by Kwame Alexander and The Last Quintista by Donna Barbara Higera. I showed these two books for writing reasons. One of the main reasons, the main characters are twelve years old, which my students are the same age, so they can really relate to the characters' experiences. Additionally, Kwame Alexander, he's an award-winning author. What he does is he writes these verse, verse poem novels. So the entire story is written in poetry format. This makes kind of poetry a lot more accessible for students because they really struggle usually when it comes to poems. Then we had The Last Quintista. This was the 2022 Newbury Medal-winning book. It's a sci-fi dystopian story that a lot of students can have a kind of intense conversations about, really interesting kind of topics. But I wanted to kind of focus on the fact that it won the Newbury Medal Award just a few years ago. So I think teachers, what they do is they always are updating their best practices in terms of teaching. But we also need to apply that for the materials that we're using, which is why this book approval process is so important. Teachers have a chance to really share stories that they love themselves, but also sharing the latest in young adult literature. So the steps they have to go through is first, you find a book, you read it, you say, okay, this would be great for my students to read. Then you share it with your principal. In this case, I shared it with Principal Decker Saffaro at Central Middle School. He read both of the books. He also said they were great and we should pass it on. So then I had to fill out a form, which I filled out and I shared with Bridgette Vaughn, our ELA coordinator. The form looks like this. It's two pages. Basically, you explain what the book is, what it covers, and then you also kind of go into how you might teach it very quickly. We use Common Sense Media, the website, to kind of make sure that it's age-appropriate. In this case, booked, it's ages ten and up. It'll tell you any difficult topics that might pop up or any inappropriate scenes. But both of these books are appropriate for our students. Then we check to make sure that we can obviously teach this, it's not just reading a fun book. We've got to make sure we're following those ELA frameworks, the Massachusetts standards. And we check to make sure that the book meets the criteria for being a complex text. But of course, both these being kind of written by Newbury Medal-winning authors, they, they met those text complexity criteria. Yeah, so that's kind of the process. It's just a few steps. Just want to highlight that with you tonight. I think it's really important for teachers to have a lot of more say and voice and choice in their classrooms. So when they get to find a book that they really love and enjoy and they want to share with their students, this book approval process allows for that, which I think is the greatest benefit. So thank you so much for listening to my presentation. I really appreciate you taking your time.
So that was Mr. Matthews. And I know he spoke sort of quickly, but that was because I put him under the gun as far as like make it a brief video. So I'm happy to answer any specific questions about that process afterwards. So literacy isn't just about what happens inside the classroom. It's a celebration that happens all year long, all across the district. We honor National Poetry Month each April by encouraging students to read, write and share poetry from different cultures and traditions. In early May, I'll be attending a local author event featuring New York Times bestselling authors Kwame Alexander, which was one of the authors actually that Spencer Matthews mentioned, and Jerry Craft at Belmont Books. You may recall that Jerry Craft visited with us virtually a few years ago when we had the graphic novel New Kid as part of our One Book, One School initiative. These two authors have recently paired up and have a new hybrid illustrated novel coming out May 6th. So I've invited teachers to this event and I'll be purchasing some copies for us to review. Author visits bring real-world connections to students, giving them a chance to meet the minds behind the books they love. Events like Read Across America Week and Raising Multicultural Kids emphasize the importance of daily reading and celebrating the diversity of our nation's readers and writers. Programs like the United States of Readers from Scholastic provide free books to promote equity and access. School-wide literacy celebrations such as reading challenges and themed events create a culture where reading is not just academic, it's joyful. And you can see some of that joy through the photos on this slide. On the top right, you see Merrick Koch reading to students as a special guest during Read Across America Week. I also added some photos from events with some award-winning authors. Author Jan Brett read from her new book to many QPS educators at the Massachusetts Reading Conference last month in Newton. Author Jerry Pallotta read to students at Clifford Marshall during the United States of Readers kickoff event. And author Sylvia Louis shared one of her books virtually during World Read Aloud Day. And speaking of World Read Aloud Day, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Nazaro to speak more on that.
So this past February, I was able to schedule over twelve different authors to come to my classroom virtually on World Read Aloud Day. So we had two different authors from Europe and the rest came from all different parts of the United States and they were able to zoom in. I had sixth graders, seventh graders and eighth graders. I invited the whole school to the day and it ended up being an awesome afternoon. I've done it for the past couple of years now. And we were able to use the auditorium, we put them up on the big screen, the kids were able to see them. They were able to see the kids, which was awesome. So the students were read excerpts from whatever book the author was generally trying to promote. And after the Read Aloud, students were able to ask the authors all kinds of questions about their writing process, their inspiration. And then every author ended up finishing the presentation with some book recommendations for the students that they've read aside from their own book that they liked recently, which was perfect timing. We had the Scholastic Book Fair at school that week. And some of the authors actually recommended some of the books that were able to be purchased at the book fair. So some kids had taken those and our PTO was nice enough that we were able to fill a bag. And I got a bunch of new books for my classroom that the students could read as well, which was great. So them being able to have the opportunity to allow authors into the classroom, put a huge, like wide variety of diverse texts in front of them that they may not have had access to before, which is great. And some examples from the core curriculum in grades six through eight that we use. So starting with the collections anthology, which consists of short stories taken from there, and then Common Lit and Read Works, which are provided to us by the district. Those are great for supplemental texts, nonfiction, essays, things like that, as well as whole-class novels like Ms. Vaughn talked about, poetry, plays and readers theater. So in the eighth grade at Central, we have a really wide range of diverse texts. We start the school year off with a unit on culture and belonging. And we read stories like My Favorite Chaperone, which is a story about a young girl who moves to America from Kazakhstan. Bonani, which is a personal essay about a boy from Haiti. And Fish Cheeks by Amy Tan, which is a story about a girl who's embarrassed by her family and her culture. So something that they all can kind of relate with pretty frequently as middle schoolers. So they resonate a lot with them. And then after that, we spend a lot of time reading The Diary of Anne Frank as a whole class. So we do that as a whole-class novel. And then we finish off the year, which we just started this past week, with a unit on global citizenship by reading the book and watching the documentary Girl Rising, which has a big part in QPS, which we really love. And the kids really get very into it. It's kind of funny to watch them step out of their own bubble of Quincy Public Schools and say, wow, this is, we're so lucky to get an education. And it's, it's really heartwarming to hear them say that every year. It's really great. So these are some district-wide initiatives that we've been working on for diverse texts. So we're given the opportunities to engage with tons of diverse texts, which is awesome. So for example, we celebrate with the district-wide initiatives like the collaboration with the Thomas Crane Public Library. Back in October, we took all of the eighth graders at Central on a walking field trip, which was very brave of us. We walked from Central over to the library. And we were able to bring all the kids into the library. We got a tour of all of the, the new teen room, the archives, all the spaces that they could study in, everything that they could utilize there, which is so much that most of them really don't even know about. And then every kid was able to get a library card as well if they didn't have one before. And I would say probably about a third of my students were able to take home a library card that day when they hadn't had one, which was fantastic. This exposed them to so many texts that they may not have had access to before. And then we also provide access to these books through suggested summer reading lists from the ALA, the conferences like Ms. Vaughn talked about, the MRA. And then back in November, I was lucky enough, you can see in this picture here, to be able to attend the National Council of Teachers of English Convention in the Seaport, which was an absolutely outstanding two days. It was so wonderful, not only to connect with our colleagues, but I learned so much over those two days that I was able to take back to my classroom immediately. So we got to attend workshops and sessions about a ton of different topics. But really my highlight was being able to bring back so many titles to my classroom that maybe I hadn't heard about before. And there was a huge room where they were just giving out books for us to bring back to our classrooms. And I'm sure, you know, publishers trying to get them in kids' hands. But they were a wonderful variety. And you can see in the picture, this was Kwame Alexander, who we've spoken about tonight at the conference. We heard him speak, he was wonderful. And he's written a ton of the middle-grade novels that kids are reading now. He just is a really popular and he does it really well in a way that kids love his books. And then finally, for system-wide professional development, last spring I presented to my colleagues on the topic of diverse books and the use of mirrors and windows in the middle school classroom after I finished my master's thesis on the topic. So I'm going to share some information about mirrors and windows in the classroom with you all now. So this is a quote by Rudine Sims Bishop. It says, "Books are sometimes windows, offering views of worlds that may be real or imagined, familiar or strange. These windows are also sliding glass doors and readers have only to walk through in imagination to become part of whatever world has been created or recreated by the author." So Rudine Sims Bishop is often regarded as the mother of multicultural children's literature. And she coined the phrase mirrors and windows, which is what I did the majority of my study of my thesis on. It's important to kind of connect this idea to the VOCAL survey, which is the Views of Climate and Learning Survey that eighth graders take in Quincy Public Schools every year. And one of the main questions that students are asked is, I read books in class that include people who are similar to me. So part of our aim in teaching about mirrors and windows is to ensure that students understand that people who are similar to me has a really wide range of meanings. So for example, a student might initially think when we read The Diary of Anne Frank, I don't really have that much in common with Anne Frank. And then maybe they're a boy, maybe they have a different religion. But then once we dig deeper into the book, they start to realize that they have a lot more in common with her. She was a really typical teenager, she fought with her mom, she dealt with insecurities, she dreamed of something bigger. And that's something that they all can relate to. And sometimes the VOCAL survey can seem really literal to them, especially as a middle schooler. They can take it really seriously. But if we just teach them how to identify with these characters in a way that makes sense to them, they can see themselves in a much wider variety of the texts that are presented to them. So what are windows? A text can be considered a window when the reader can find themselves wrestling with the unfamiliar and getting a peek into a world that is unlike their own. So books act as windows to help students develop an understanding about the world, realize that there are many similarities between them and the others who, and others who may not seem so similar at first and learn about how they might fit in the larger world. So when we read a text, we always want to ask students to find a window. So we usually ask them, or I do in my classroom, how does your book offer you a view through a window into an unfamiliar world or a new perspective on life? So what gives you a way to see something that you maybe didn't see before? And then we also talk about mirrors. So a text can serve as a mirror if the reader sees some aspect of themselves reflected on the pages. So these reflections can be physical, cultural or emotional. And physical reflections prompt students to see themselves maybe in the illustrations of a picture book or in the narrative of a novel. So cultural reflections invite connections between readers' experiences, maybe their families, communities, values, traditions, language, religion. And emotional reflections inspire readers to connect with characters and classmates in various ways as texts provoke similar emotional responses. So our guiding question that we ask when we want students to look at a mirror in a book is, how does your book reflect elements of your own life and your own experiences back to you? So these texts can be used to help build community. So these are some ways that you can use, any teacher could use these types of texts in their classroom. Building community by encouraging students to have interpersonal connections with one another. You can use them to kind of mediate. You can use them to kind of mediate discussions with meaningful interaction among students. Maybe they realize, oh, that resonated with you. I didn't know that about you. That resonated with me, too. I had went through something similar. And also building community by engaging families with these texts, which can be done through encouraging the use of multilingual texts, which I know is something that many of us do in our classrooms. So using a multilingual mentor text can encourage students to write, use their own writing in multiple different languages, just to reinforce their cultural and their linguistic diversity that they see in their own homes. And then teachers can incorporate bilingual and multilingual texts to enhance readers' making meaning and fostering inclusion around fluid mentor texts. And then tackling tough topics. So supporting students in dealing with some complex feelings when these things come up. Not only can these texts reflect it as something that you could make a positive out of it, but they can also support students in dealing with these topics and occurrences. And then obviously scaffolding writing as well. So utilizing mentor texts that allows students to find their own voices and share their own stories. So strategically-selected mentor texts can tap into, you know, funds of knowledge that promote creative writing, to help them find their own voices, share their own stories in a way that maybe they didn't think that they could before, and help them participate in a meaningful culturally diverse classroom in a way that maybe they couldn't prior. So in this way, the writers simultaneously learn about writing skills while also centering the identities of their classmates in a way that maybe they hadn't seen them before. So these are some questions that educators can ask themselves when presenting these books to your students. So who is reflected and validated through the books in my classroom library or in the books that I present to my students? Does my collection contain culturally-specific titles in addition to culturally generic and culturally-neutral titles? How are the characters humanized? In what ways are the characters multi-dimensional? Do my books match my student population and the society in our community? And then these are just some of our major takeaways. So students should be able to see themselves represented in the texts that are put in front of them. Student identities are complex and texts should allow for a variety of connections. Mirrors and windows allow students to build both empathy and sympathy. It's important to review and audit your classroom library in a way that supports all students and then allow for accurate representation of students in a way that celebrates joy and centers joy. Sometimes these texts can be, like I said, a little tough, a little, but sometimes they just get a little down when they're reading them. Sometimes The Diary of Anne Frank can be tough to teach to eighth graders. So also including books that do center some kind of joy around their culture. And then as educators, just being vigilant about how we choose novels for whole group and individual purposes. And then now we have a video for you guys about the student voices and choices in the texts. And this is from my colleague Victoria Cronin over at Broad Meadows. She teaches seventh grade reading.
My name is Victoria Cronin. I teach grade seven reading at Broad Meadows Middle School. We start every day the same way. Students come into class, they take out their choice novels, and we spend 10 minutes in silence reading. Students can read whatever they want. The book can come from home. It can be on their Chromebook. They can listen to audiobooks on the Sora app. We have an amazing classroom library that's been donated over the years that students have a diverse selection of authors and topics that they can choose from to read.
I'm Kate May in seventh grade. My favorite book from middle school is probably The Red Pyramid by Rick Riordan because I like magic and mythology. I connect with the chapter books I read because most of the characters in the chapter books are around my age, so I can empathize with a lot of the situations that happen in the books.
I'm Ty Lee and I'm in seventh grade. My favorite book to read in middle school is Stamped by Eva Max Kenney because it gives an interesting perspective on the world. I connect with a lot of the chapter books I read with being able to learn new things with them. It's more rewarding to choose these books because I'm able to challenge myself with the reading level.
My favorite book from middle school is New Kid by Jerry Craft because it was the first book that I read in sixth grade and it allowed me to explore more genres. I connect to the chapter books that I read because they like have the same experience as me or they're probably like in the same age range as me.
I find that reading short stories and plays and poems, that's where I'm giving them the text, but when they're able to have their own choice and, you know, have a voice in what they're reading, that's really where the growth happens.
And so I hope that this was really fun. I'm glad that you requested a presentation like this and more information about it. You can see that many of our students and teachers, you can hear it, you can see it in their voices, hear it in their voices, see it on their faces about how amazing it is and how many opportunities we do have in the Quincy Public Schools for them through books. And with that, thank you for all your support and we'll take any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Whibley, please. Trying to figure out who she is.
Great. Thank you for the presentation. I love your windows and mirrors and windows reference. I think that was, that was great. So I do have one question, not actually my question. I was out talking to a group, Troop 42, the other day, great group of kids. And one of the things they had asked was about student feedback on when they have to read class books or all school books. And can they actually give some student feedback on it? A book Clementine especially came up that that was not a favorite and they would like to be able to voice their opinion that that was not a favorite book. And it's funny because my son is 24 and I remember him having to read that book back when he was in middle school. And I don't remember him liking it either, but, but I just wanted to know what I could bring back to them as to a way they could voice that they just did not like that book.
In my classroom, I do it pretty informally. I'd like to think that I have a good enough relationship with my students where if they don't like a book, they will definitely let me know, for sure. They have very strong opinions like that. We read a really great book called The Contender in eighth grade and they love it. Every year, it's like, we love this book. It's a little violent. It's about a boxer and they're like, this book's awesome. Like, yeah, that's great. So I think in my experience, if I ever got the feedback from them, that they were like, all right, we're beyond this, like we're moving on, I think I would be able to take that and be able to internalize it a little bit and move on. But I think most teachers do kind of take the feedback, just anecdotally, I think, from students. We don't have any like process for it, but I think if I ever heard from my students like, yeah, we don't like this book anymore, I'd be like, okay, I think maybe we can move on, but.
Yeah, I'll add to that. So what some teachers do is they have literature circles. So when they are doing a whole-class novel, they might have, you know, four different novels. That may not happen right at the beginning of the year, but then once they get to know the students and, you know, what kinds of things they like to read, you know, it's the teacher's job to kind of take them out of their comfort zone and try something different. But at the same time, there's an opportunity to go back and read what you like. So sometimes there's concurrent novels happening at the same time. The other piece I want to mention is, you know, there's no author out there, I don't think, that intended for a novel to be sort of stretched out over many, 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 many weeks. So teachers do try to condense that while trying to get, you know, the standards and what they're, what they're trying to get out of it done quickly. So they may not read an entire novel. And then if the students do like it, then they can continue on to finish it. And if they don't, that's okay. And then they also have that opportunity for the independent reading. And then in a previous presentation, you'd heard, you know, we're trying to incorporate the writing revolution. And one of the teachers, instead of having like traditional chapter quizzes, is having more responses in writing and the feedback, you know, she's taking, surveying her students and she's getting more positive feedback about the books they read because they have to think more about what they're reading rather than just answering chapter questions, you know, about the content or the plot. So.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Whibley?
Yeah, that's all very nice. Where do the classics fall in all of this?
They, they fall right in line with all of this.
Can you give an example?
The Diary of Anne Frank.
Okay. In the high school level?
In the high school level. So I coordinate K to eight. And I, but I do collaborate. I just spoke to an ELA teacher this week and they still do a lot of the classics. You know, it depends, I think it depends on the course level that the students are in, but the classics still are pretty prevalent at North Quincy High School and Quincy High School.
That's what I'm asking. Because it'd be a shame to have that not, not being taught.
I was, I look at the list pretty frequently of like the approved novels and the high school is very picky about, they, they, those are theirs, the, a lot of the classics and they're not willing to give them up. A lot like To Kill a Mockingbird, used to be regarded as an eighth-grade text, now it's a high-school text. But I think they spend a lot of time like dissecting it at that level, which is the difference between like maybe eighth and 10th. But I know at Central in seventh grade, some of the students read Animal Farm and Lord of the Flies as well. So those are two classics that I know are being taught at the seventh-grade level.
I remember reading Great Expectations in grade 10 and I wanted to pull my hair out. And I succeeded.
I know The Great Gatsby is still at the high-school level. They do more Shakespeare, whereas, you know, Midsummer Night's Dream is introduced in grade five. So some of those classics are introduced on a smaller scale or in a bridge version in younger grades and then they can get into more depth when they get to high school.
At the elementary level, when I, when I used to teach, I used to sign a list of Newbury Award winners and the kids would choose from those, those, those books. I remember one young, young man in fifth grade chose Jungle Book by Rudyard Kipling. He's teaching at North Quincy High School now.
I bet. I mean, that is a challenging text.
Yeah. And he got through it and wrote a great report, so. I just think it's, it's important for them to, again, to have exposure to those and I'm glad we're still doing it.
Oh, yeah. And we still have Charlotte's Web in grade three as sort of one of the first novels that everybody reads. And it's, you know, a, a, a book full of animals. How can we relate to the animals? But every child can relate to one of the animals in that book. You know, it's just about the exchange and the discussions that the, that the teachers have with the students.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have just a couple of questions. So on this, thank you very much. This was really, really helpful. How we choose, what texts we use, that list, that's used for the whole class stuff. Is it also used for the choice books? If somebody wanted to prepare some, a novel in as a choice book, how do they get them?
Yeah. So that process that Spencer Matthews was referring to, that's for whole-class novels. Some of the other books on the list there, when he has to go and check, some of the books on the list that are on the checklist from other grade levels may not be used as whole-class novels. For example, we have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of picture books in elementary level that may have been made into novels in middle school. And that would be okay to use in some circumstances, but we still have to go through the process because some of these books are made into movies and the movies aren't appropriate. So for whole-class novels, we really have to be careful because once it gets on that list, that means it's accessible for anyone across the district. One of the other pieces that he didn't mention is that now with Google, I can hyperlink what a teacher sends to me as far as what might be a little bit of a touchy subject or whatever and how, and there's a section on there, it was highlighted, about how would you as a teacher handle this? Maybe you send a letter home to families in the beginning or do you know who are the people in your classroom, right? And what, what have they, have they experienced this or have they not experienced this and we don't want them to? So if there is anything like that, it can be hyperlinked in there now so that if a teacher says, oh, this is on the list, they don't just pick it and then they can run with it. They can read about how to handle these types of situations or discussions if it comes up, which has been really helpful. But for classroom libraries, you know, that, we rely on commonsense media for that. I mean, sometimes, you know, like The Last Quintista, that's a 10 and up, I believe, on commonsense media. That doesn't, that means the content is appropriate for that, but the reading level might be far above that for, and more appropriate for middle school. So I, I do like that side because it gives reviews from parents, from students themselves. But, you know, if there, if a student, and I may be giving you a long-winded answer, I'm sorry, but if a student has a certain issue and a parent asks, we want to be able to have access to other books that, that a student might need individually for something that they're dealing with or that they're interested in. So that's a little bit more flexible. I don't know if you want to add to that.
So I also do choice reading. I call it independent reading in my class, but, so my students, it's one of my goals for the years for them to build their reading stamina because their reading stamina, sometimes just by the time they get to middle school, can be really low. So I start off with eight minutes a day at the start of the year, then we go to 10, then we go to 12 by the end of the year, which they do pretty well. So I let them bring their own books. I do send home a permission slip before that says, "Your child is choosing this book. I would like you to sit down and discuss with your child what book they are reading." And parents are usually great about it. They say, okay, this book is okay with me. And I usually at open house and at parent-teacher conferences say, you know, it would be wonderful if you could maybe discuss the book that your child is choosing because they could have gotten it from the library, they could have gotten, you know, they could have just picked it up off a shelf at home. So I just say to them, what's okay for your family might not be okay for another family. So I really just put it back onto the parent and say, what, you know your child best and what's okay for them to read is, is really up to you. If I see something that I'm like, I don't know, like a serial killer book, I might say, send an email home and say, hey, I saw that so-and-so was reading a book about serial killers. I just wanted to make sure that this was okay with you. And usually the parents will get back to me and say, yeah, they were interested in that or yeah, they, maybe I'll have them pick a different one, just as an example, but not that that's never happened, but if it did.
They can get books from, from anywhere on their own, you know?
Yeah. And parents are usually very receptive to that. I always say it's causes for good conversation. What did you read about in your independent reading book today over the dinner table or something like that?
I think for the, for the choice books, you're getting to the mirrors and the windows too, because we don't, and I, I agree with you. Sometimes the kids don't understand that question. We've talked about that a million times, the MCAS question, but it still is something that we're dinged with every year. So I love the fact that we're talking about mirrors and windows with kids and, and having books in the classroom like the culturally responsive, culturally responsive teaching. Now, what is that, what is that group that's in some of our schools? Raising Multicultural Kids.
Oh, the Raising Multicultural Kids, yeah, absolutely.
And that's really wonderful. It really is wonderful. I just have one question though. What if a parent doesn't like your, your whole book? Have you ever had anybody ask you to reconsider a book?
I personally, I have not.
Yeah. I, I mean, it's come to me as a teacher and in my role now. And so, you know, we have a discussion about it. I, you know, we are not in the business of making anybody upset with reading. We want kids to love reading. We've got, there are so many books out there that we can teach. So if someone is upset, usually it's just a non-negotiable, we just don't do it.
Even if it's a, if it's a whole-class book that everybody loves?
Even if it's a whole-class book. Yeah. I'm not, I mean, if.
I don't know. I think if you had, if you had really gone through all your process here and decided this was a great book for the curriculum and one parent didn't like it, I don't know that I would.
But if they have a rationale, we have so many others to choose from luckily. You know what I mean? I want to, I want to value them. I mean, there, there are other way, there are so many other books if I have to teach or you have to teach theme or, you know, different points of view, there are other books that we can do that if it's gonna, if it's, if it's really something that is going to be upsetting, it's going to have a negative impact.
It just bothers me if the whole classroom or a whole doesn't get access to something that we think is good because one parent may be challenging it. I mean, couldn't we give that student a different choice instead of saying, nobody's going to read this book if we all have agreed that it's a great book?
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's, that's kind of the beauty of the literature circle model in some cases, you know, because then there's like, there's four, sometimes five different books circling around and they can choose. It, it doesn't happen very often, I can tell you that. It's very rare.
And I, I don't believe, Ms. Vaughn, that we have a policy around text selection at all.
It is a very old policy on text selection, which I feel is valid.
I think that the MASCE policy is very succinct and I wonder if we could just put that into our policies. Can we get to look at that? I don't think we need to write a big deal policy. It seems like you guys sort of know what you're doing here. But I do think that if there's a policy in the book that's old, we should update it with what's current in the MASCE, which I looked at and is not very, it's not, it's not really going to hold your feet to the floor about anything.
I can say that the form that Mr. Matthews mentioned in the video, that used to be sort of basic.
not really going to hold your feet to the fire about anything.
I can say that the form that Mr. Matthews mentioned in the video, that used to be sort of basics about standards, ELA frameworks and standards, right, and text complexity. That has changed quite a bit. I mean, he went through it pretty quickly, but it's, it's an in-depth process. I think in some ways, you know, when a teacher reads a book or wants to bring it, or a student brings a book and says, can't we do this as a whole class? And then you kind of have to go through the process. You say, oh, I don't think that's worth it, you know? So that's why it doesn't happen that often.
Yeah. And also, I'm a little concerned that I understand the rationale that if somebody brings a book in about serial killers, and they're sitting next to my six-year-old, who's reading, you know, something really gentle, I might be a little concerned about that. But so it's, it's a little difficult thing to, to balance, too.
That's in my, I generally don't have them share too much about their independent reading books with each other, only like if they have... Yeah, exactly. If there's a title that I've read, I'll share that with them that I think might be good for their age, but in general, I try to have them, just because I know what's okay for one might not be okay for another.
I've actually said, you cannot bring that book to school. And that was it, yeah.
Ms. Nizaro.
Kathy, Clementine is a darling book. Just two quick ones. For our special education students, do we, do they have access to books on tape?
Yes.
They do?
Yes, absolutely. And then what Ms. Nizaro was talking about with some of our supplemental materials for excerpts with Common Lit and Readworks, students can be reading about the same content, but maybe at their appropriate reading level. So we have access to that.
That's good. And then we used to have, way back when, again, time during, set aside during the school day, it was called Dear Time. Drop everything and read. Is that what you're talking about?
That's basically what I do in my classroom, yeah. They come in for the first eight, 10, or 12 minutes, and they just sit down. They know, they come right in, sit down, take out your independent reading book.
Yeah, we used to do it right after lunchtime, which is perfect because I would just settle them down, so. I'm glad to hear that. That's great. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Want to wish you a journey? Is this your group? We're going.